All right, I have six thirty on my watch. I would like to call the Village of Connaught Grove, Village Board of Trustees, meeting to order on Monday, January third. Happy New Year to everyone. It is again six thirty on my watch. We are holding this both at the Village Hall as well as via Zoom. So it's a hybrid feature for those that aren't aware. But if you can see in the picture there, you can see the Village Hall. Again, the Zoom link is at the top of the agenda. Or if someone chooses, there's an audio call in. Or you can show up in person at the Village Hall. Again, due to the ongoing pandemic, we're doing this hybrid modeling as a meeting. Let's confirm that we have a quorum. So Lisa, please roll call.
Alan.
Present.
Murphy.
Present.
Peterson.
Here.
Brad Clark.
Here.
Valencia.
Present.
Vanderweldig.
Present.
Ann Williams.
Present. We have a quorum. The agenda was properly posted and we'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please find a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item four is public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak. So if you are from the public and choose to speak, we just ask that you share your name, your address, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes so that we have, if we have a number of people interested in speaking, we can get to all those folks. So with that, I'll be quiet. And again, find your mute button and chime in if you'd like. All right, we'll move on then to item five is to discuss and consider a meeting minutes from our regular board meeting held on December twentieth. The meeting minutes were in our packet. Any questions, comments, edits, or consideration for motion?
I'll make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Moral, second, whichever came up first.
Heidi, I think actually you started it, so, but I'll let Lisa decide. We have a motion and second then to approve the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Moving on then to item six is unfinished business. First up is to discuss and consider ordinance thirteen dash two zero two one, amending Parks and Recs and Forestry Committee. The ordinance item was in our packet. And I think we've already spoken about this before. So any questions about this? And again, this is to add some young talent to some, a couple of these meetings. In this case, Parks.
John, I'd just like to note that I thank Rick for his work on this. And Larry, thank you for being here. I don't see Rick on here. But I think this cover is what we had intended to have use on the committee. And it specifically notes high school students Rick had noted because that's kind of just how it fits along with state law or something to that effect, I believe. So it goes along with that. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty one, amending the Parks Recreation and Forestry Committee.
Is there?
Period.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, thanks Sarah, thanks Melissa. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries. Item B is to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, eligible projects and consider prioritization proposed of village uses of ARPA fund monies. So there are a few items in there in our packet. One, a memo on leaf, a potential leaf truck, and the other on both Thaden Pond and a sewer interceptor, a farm sewer, sanitary sewer interceptor. So I will open up to board members for discussion.
I have a question on the leaf truck memo. JJ, in the memo, it talks about needing the additional maintenance or for, I have the wrong, additional staff person. And I'm wondering if that's because of the leaf truck or if you already were thinking you would need that position and the leaf truck would just further solidify the need for that?
Both, I would say. You know, you see the info annually on how our staff is small and efficient and could definitely use some more staffing. So adding a service that would, you know, take up a person from everything I've gathered, you know, for three, four months, three in the fall and it sounds like one in the spring in most municipalities, just pretty much forty hours a week, would be something that I'd definitely want a person to come with the leaf back. But whether we add this service or not, we need staff sooner rather than later. So kind of both.
So JJ, just to clarify on that. So if we didn't, wouldn't go forward with lead back, the plan is still to add a public works person, correct?
I believe so, yeah. I mean, well, John, you know more than most too, just your time on committee. That, yeah, I'll take as many as we could fit in the budget. I mean, I understand that it's, it's the picture. But we're just fortunate to have Marty in particular, but the staff that we're following behind in its items. So, yeah, there's a staffing need without additional service.
Okay. So really, we're talking about probably potentially two people. If you add the lead back plus just addressing the growth, we're talking two and twenty-three if we add the leaf back.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
And I miss it. You need both. Is it a both end? You need the service and you need the two staff?
No, it's.
Yeah.
Or is it one or the other?
That's a trick. I don't know that we need the service yet. We do offer the compost drop off. That's kind of the discussion we did have at one committee level was, do we know yet if it's a need that we should be out collecting on curbside or that we're still okay with folks, you know, being responsible if you want to, to bring your own to the site we offer? So I would say we could still continue without adding this service and stay at the level we're providing service right now. But we would still need some staff here sooner rather than later in the department just to maintain that level. So again, not a clean answer, but.
Yeah, because I was going to ask if it was one or the other, are we doing an analysis of what the price difference, the delta would be between the two? If it was one or the other?
Yeah, I don't think it's that clean, really. I think we're, you know, with the growth we've seen just since I've been here and the, you know, the team we have does a great job. But I mean, we, we need to get Marty some help whether we do this or not.
Okay. Thank you, JJ.
And just so I understand, Thaden Pond, we need to do that whether we're using ARPA funds or not. So that's something that has to be done sooner than later. Is that correct?
That's another more complicated answer. And it's, I kind of call it out in the memo, but not really just because there's a lot of moving parts to that. On the western watershed in the village, we're not meeting our water quality requirements ourselves. But we are participating in adaptive management through the Herowinds program by our contribution of, I believe, twelve thousand and change annually to meet that. That said, that's a twenty-year agreement that we're fi- four or five years into. And we need to make progress towards meeting those standards on our own. There's no guarantee that DNR is going to approve that in the future. So we've taken no steps since we joined that to improve our water quality. So this would be a huge piece going towards that. So, I mean, it has to happen sooner rather than later, I guess, is a tougher one to pin down. But I would, I mean, we've had it in the financial management plan for twenty-three construction for a few, I guess I'll say that. And it'd be a nice step to take sooner rather than later because it doesn't meet all the needs that we do have to reach. So it's going to be multiple projects over fifteen years that'll be required. So again, not a clean answer, but I would like to see it, you know, in, in the coming years, just to see progress towards those impending requirements.
And if we didn't use ARPA funds to do that, that would all be coming out of the levy then, correct? In the future?
We are gonna, there's, there's grant opportunities. But, um, yeah, it's, it's going to be a project we'd borrow for, whatever the number is.
And I'm curious, what would get us, move us in a better direction to meet those DNR guidelines that you talked about? Thaden Pond or a leaf back?
I think Thaden Pond at this time, that, that said, I'm going to be the guy with fuzzy answers all night. That said, DNR has just started taking into account leaf collection programs very recently for credits. So, but I do think from what I've heard from MSA prior and Strand's team in their early looks, this one offers a lot of solids and phosphorus removal, this project. This is a big time bang for your buck. It's, it's a lot of bucks, but it makes a lot of water quality improvements. So I do think it'd be tough to beat with anything.
And if we used some ARPA funds for the leaf back, what's the lifespan of the leaf back? And then moving forward, that would be something we'd have purchased out of, you know, levy funds basically, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we'd, we'd put it into our capital plan. My hope is, we've been pretty good about, you know, proactive maintenance. We've been able to keep vehicles longer than, than I, than I'm always comfortable with. But I would say seven to ten years for sure, we'd be all right. And it does sound like it's, it's modest maintenance a year. I've talked to pretty much everybody around here and it all depends on, well, it depends on a lot. I mean, Manona with the age of the trees and the density of the, you know, the urban forest there, they run multiple machines nonstop. So there's a lot more cost to them where ours would probably be a lot less for, for the first couple of decades. But it would be, yes. It'd be a piece of equipment we'd put in. And once we start offering the service, I'm going to, you know, plan for that replacement when it needed.
Okay, all right. And then how environmentally friendly is it for the environment, I guess, in the hottest phrase? We all rake our leaves and get it on, you know, between the sidewalk and curb on Friday or on Saturday or Sunday over the weekend. But that truck doesn't come by till Friday. What keeps those leaves from blowing into the streets and the gutters and the water and all that stuff?
Again, I'm gonna, yep, we, we don't want leaves in the gutters for, well, you don't want them in the gutters ever, if you can help it. As soon as they get rained on, that's releasing that phosphorus. So, um, yes. Ideally, every homeowner would be catching their leaves, getting them out of the gutter line themselves and, and, you know, keeping them that way and then, and get them onto the curb when they're, when we're coming by with whatever program would be if, if we did offer one or mulching them or, or loading them up and getting them over to our compost site. But that said, there are, you do see that where folks push them out there and, and, you know, half their pile does fall into the gutter line. So I haven't seen any good measurements that can really capture that. But that's a consideration, absolutely.
JJ, sorry, I just have a quick question on Thaden Pond. Can you just remind me where, which pond that is?
It's actually kind of hidden behind, like West Oak when it's curving around just north of, of BB. It's really not, a lot of people think it's the one right on BB, the kind of really visible water one there. It's, it's back behind, kind of hidden. And it doesn't really look like much of a pond. So I can pull up, oh, wait, no, I can't. I'm not on the, oh, Jeepers. I could try and pull something up here and share in our hybrid format.
That's okay. That was my question, if it was the one right on BB or a different one. So thank you.
JJ, is the Thaden Pond going to also improve quantity and flood resiliency in addition to water quality? Is that part of the scope?
Yeah, not, I mean, it's not the main reason for this one. But obviously anytime you're, you know, it's dredging and reshaping and removing a whole bunch of material to make a pond. So that right there just offers storage.
Is it being designed to a certain level storm or are we not that far yet?
I don't think we're that far yet.
JJ, can we dictate that too? I mean, we're seeing extreme weather events. You know, there was unfortunately one down at Tennessee, not too terribly long. There's been one in Germany, you know, a few years ago. There was even one in Middleton where they just get a deluge of amount of rain. But we could work with Strand and probably design it so that we anticipate that two-hundred-year event, which probably is going to happen before we're all gone.
Yeah, I would, I would think Josh's team can, can take a look at maximizing the project and what we can do with it, absolutely. I just don't think we've had the opportunity to delve into it like, like that yet.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of, you know, what Heidi said. And again, we could, you know, once you have the equipment there, you can, as long as the DNR is okay with what you're doing, which they'd have to approve anything you do. I would think they'd, they'd be, you know, all in full support of something like that where we think about, you know, you know, some rare event, which aren't so rare anymore, that we need to prepare for.
Yep, absolutely. We'd take as much as we can into consideration when getting that final design.
JJ, as I, as I read this, and I can tell there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, right? In terms of how do we spend this money, right? This is like Rooster's Millions here, right? How do we get rid of this money? I guess, I, I want to ask, right? And I think the, I think I know the answer, but I want to ask you, right? Like, these are the, out of every, out of the money that we've been allocated, you know, all the possible projects, Thaden Pond and the sewer interceptor are like, were these chosen because of the dollar amount or because of the priority? Or help me understand, you know, why these two and not, and not other projects related to broadband, water and sewer?
Yep. I would say when I first started hearing about this, before we even read any guidance or anything, I just pulled together a list. I probably had twelve things on it, but there was a definite one and, one and two. And then a huge drop off to everything else that was water sewer related. And honestly, first in, when I first heard of it, I didn't know that water even meant stormwater. So, I mean, I thought, I had a big list on the, on the water and the sanitary sewer side, but not a whole lot of stormwater. When I read that it was determined stormwater qualified Thaden, you know, I honestly jumped to a tie with the interceptor project in my mind with everything we could have possibly done. And then given recent developments, it's kind of, you know, really the only one that stands out above anything else.
Okay. Cool. And then regarding the leaf back, I mean, like we've, you know, I've been on the board since May and we've, I think this is the fourth time we've talked about the leaf back. I realize that, you know, like lead times are ridiculous right now. But refresh my memory, we don't have anything in the financial management plan yet around a leaf back, have we?
Uh, no.
Okay. I guess as a separate note, like, it's probably something we should, like, I feel like we've talked about this a lot and the, the timing is like impacted whether or not we do anything about it. But I feel like enough people have asked me about it that I feel like understood that we, like staffing is an issue. But I feel like, you know, based on people I've talked about, talked to and, and again, I didn't realize that, you know, personally, that removing the leaves is actually helping remove the phosphorus. That was a point that I learned tonight. And just teaches me, I need to do a little bit more research. But I think as a, as an aside here, we should probably talk about the leaf back. You know, even though it does qualify, I think based on ARPA funds and what's necessary with Thaden and the sewer interceptor, it sounds like the leaf back should be treated separate. Would that, would that be a correct statement? Or would you agree with that statement?
That it should be separate, meaning, well, maybe I don't.
Why would we address it separately? And two, it's probably something that we should maybe as a future agenda item, like come to a conclusion on the leaf back. Because it just, we keep, like, everybody wants it, but we haven't, we've taken no action on it, right? Like, it's like something, like, we should probably just make a decision at some point about the leaf back.
That's, yeah, I, yeah, as a new service proposal, I suppose that's where I would say, yes, I'd need a decision because the things we already do, I'll give you what we need. I'll tell you, I won't pull any punches. With something new, I remain neutral. So yes, I would say a decision at some point, somehow, yep.
And I, did that, and last but not least, I know you said mid twenty twenty-three for the leaf back, but didn't, couldn't it even be late twenty twenty-three or even twenty twenty-four at this point?
It could. I'm trying to remember how long now since, has it been? It's been about a month probably since it was brought up most recently that I made my calls all over the place. It does sound like it could, it's, things aren't getting better, I guess. So, yeah, I would say it'll be quite some time.
I just, I guess, John, I'll, I'll bring it up later. But I think this is probably something, it just keeps coming up, right? And it's like, let's just make a decision, you know? But I'll, I'll bring it up later. But other than that, JJ, this, this looks great, so thank you.
JJ, can you confirm that the sewage interceptor may not be as high of a priority now? I think that's what I read in the memo, given the development that will be going in there. So I wonder if leaf truck might even, prioritization wise in my mind, I'm thinking Thaden Pond, leaf truck, sewage interceptor. Did I understand that right?
I would say, given recent positive developments there that were never really clear before, you know, we'd always kind of hoped something was coming or had been planned for. But that said, we always had our easement and the ability to control that and put it in there. I would say it's much more likely now that a developer will be putting it in and contributing most of the cost. You know, we, there may be negotiation because it is a bigger pipe and it is deeper. But I would say, yes, the priority on the interceptors a lot lower now than it was even a month ago or whenever I first drafted this memo.
Just to add on to that, what JJ is getting at is the interceptor is much, it's, it's not a cost that should be exclusively put on one developer because it's a regional need for the system. So there's an oversizing component that, that, that the utility would, would pay for. It's also a TID eligible expense in our tip district number eight. So if we can get some development out there, that can also help pay for that along with the utility and the developer. So it could kind of be a, there's multiple sources to help pay for that project. And then to throw another wrench into all of this, the, the federal government is working on a bill nicknamed the Flexibility Act, which would allow the village to treat, if it's passed in the form that it's at currently, it would allow the village to spend this money in a more flexible manner. It would basically push the village into the lost revenue category. We did not have lost revenue in twenty twenty, which if we did, we would have more flexibility. But they're, they're looking to potentially change that if that would pass. The tricky thing is, is we don't know if it will pass or when it will pass. But we did get a note today from our auditors that that is something that's going on. And they did say it may make sense to hold off on spending the funds if, if we're interested in potentially using the funds for projects that are not in front of you tonight. And the, the main ones for that, I would say, would be the, the radios.
My one question is the, so Thaden Pond though is in our financial management plan. Like, we've been planning to do that for years now. And we're going to do it in twenty twenty-three regardless? I guess I'm asking JJ maybe?
That's, yes. Well, as, as with everything, I guess, until the actual budget year. But, uh, yes, that's been the plan.
Okay. I, I'll just stick my two cents in here is that I'm in favor of the leaf back truck as it will be the service that we can provide to our residents that we aren't currently providing. The, the use of ARPA funds, I'm glad that we have them available to us that, that we did not sustain losses in revenue due to the pandemic. But I think that this is a great opportunity for us to provide a new service to our residents to see benefit from the use of the ARPA funds for that. And I guess that would be my priority, knowing that we've already made plans to have Thaden Pond be revamped or whatever. It's going to be a project in our budget regardless that we planned for. And as the sewer interceptor, I think that a developer, that we shouldn't use taxpayer funds specifically for one neighborhood or development and that a developer should be more responsible for that. So that's why that's third on my list. And currently, our leaf collection does require staff time, although maybe not as much as if we did have a vehicle. I mean, it does require staff time. And by putting leaves next to the street, at this point, I don't think it necessarily maybe makes a difference because maybe people aren't raking their leaves to take them to the collection site. So they're in the street regardless, or people just pull them into the street. So I'm just going to stick that two cents in there for the leaf back truck. Thank you.
JJ, real quick, so to build on that, what Melissa said about the financial management plan. I, I see, I know the MSA said it would be six hundred and sixty K. Strand thinks it's closer to a million. What's in the management plan?
Six sixty.
Oh, okay.
And I'll just make one point, not, just one point of clarification on the interceptor sewer. Even if that was just going to stay one landowner and remain ag field, we have an easement there and the sewer that's needed is, it really does serve, even if nothing much more grows, if we just had a little bit more in a few years, it would probably still need to be done just to offer relief. Basically, a large portion of the village is going down one sewer main. And we do need a little, you know, as, as just little bits more keep getting added, that, that pipe's filling up more and more. So this, that's why this has kind of been a long-term plan thing and how Matt references that it can be paid for by the development that, you know, that's, that's the exact thing, you know, why we collect impact fees, I suppose, is that each little bit now is requiring this additional sewer.
I guess hearing that with impact fees, we had the, the Thaden Pond is in the financial management plan, albeit at six sixty and not a million. Like, my back of the napkin, Matthew, tells me that the leaf truck makes a lot of sense, knowing that the lead time is until mid to late twenty twenty-three or not twenty twenty-four. And like, and you said last time this topic came around, we don't, you don't have to put a down payment on these because the lead time is so long.
Typically, yeah, like I said, I haven't had any formal outreach and I haven't bought a big piece of equipment since the pandemic started. So I'm not sure how much that's changed. But yeah, typically, we don't have to.
So, hearing that, I guess, and rethinking things, I guess, we could, we don't necessarily need to re- readdress the leaf, the leaf vac. I guess we could talk about it now. And I, I guess I'm with Melissa, like, we had, the back of the napkin math tells me that we could, this is included. Granted, there's a staffing, but the staffing is not for another, potentially a, a full fiscal year away and then some. Because you've got this fiscal year, and it could be, if it, if the truck didn't come till 2024, it's a full two fiscal years away.
That, that's my only point in, in, that's the only point on this that I really want to make, is that, from my perspective, this decision, if it is made to buy a truck and offer this service, has to come with a person. And a lot of, a lot of the faces I see potentially may not be here, would just like it, you know, noted in as many minutes as I can. JJ said you're gonna offer a leave.
Sure. But it, you did say at the outset, though, that there's, you're gonna need more staff regardless.
Uh, yep, I'm, you'll probably hear that from me pretty steadily and consistently for all my years here. We're, yep.
I don't think, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else but myself, but like, that's the constant drumbeat that I've heard from all departments. Well, and it's, but we need to add more heads, and, and I've seen it, like, you know, you're, I fully agree. So, I think that's important to know, but also not, not a means to avoid doing a leave vac because you have to add more staff. You have to add more staff regardless.
Again, the staff, the staffing, it requires a staff member for this truck. He is going to need a new staff member, at least one in '23. So, you're really looking at two staff members then. In addition to that, you gotta start thinking about replacing this. So, you gotta replace that levy amount in your capital fund at about 60 grand or so a year. So, you're looking at 150, 140, 150 a year that this leaf truck is gonna cost against the levy every year until we get the second leaf track, truck. So, you gotta start thinking about this. The other thing is, we run into a levy problem along about, uh, Matt, correct me wrong, 2025, we have to start moving things around a bit. So, you're gonna add a service, add additional people, add the truck, own, and then secondly, we don't have a place for this truck because of facility needs. Marty has said there's no place to put it. So, we have to think about all this stuff. Public Works and Utilities have come back and said, both said top priority is Thaden Pond.
Well, that would, to be fair, having presentations on two items at a committee, and then a month later, having a presentation on one thing isn't necessarily the, the most, I don't know, the most even equitable way to go about it. And I appreciate JJ bringing those two things along, but this is an opportunity to provide another service. One question that I have, though, is with the possible flexibility of the funds coming from, on how we can use these, does that require, could we use a portion of these funds now, and if there's remaining amount, that, that, those amounts can be flexed to a different way? Or would it be better to wait on spending any of these funds until we know for certain that we could possibly use them for the radios?
Um, I'm taking a, a best guess based on what I know. And I, I think we can, you could allocate the money, and if there's money left over, and then it becomes our option to spend that in a more flexible way beyond the restrictions that we currently have in place. And I would think we could, we could use it, whatever's remaining and that's flexible way.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
It, it just seems to me that Thaden Pond is on the radar. Thaden Pond, we all need, know it needs to get done. And I'm not sure why we wouldn't take, uh, the advantage of having free money to do that, rather than take money out of the levy to, uh, to do that. Remember, every, every time we do something more and take money out of the levy, it gets us one step further away from a library, which I love, so.
JJ, um, can you speak at all to other municipalities and how they handle their, their leaves? I'm thinking, um, I, when we moved here from Madison, that has the leaf pickup, we didn't even realize that Cottage Grove didn't, you know? So, as we continue to grow and get folks who may be new to our community, how many are coming with just kind of that understanding of that's how you handle leaves? Do you have any sense of that?
It's, yeah, it's pretty common. There's, I would say, a handful to a, a couple dozen every year, it seems like, where we either knock on the door, or they call, or if they're pushed out in a pile, um, after a few weeks, they, they call and ask why they're not gone. Yeah, it's an expectation from most folks who move from anywhere around here that there's some kind of collection in it. It varies, um, how it's done from my, my network here in the area. But, um, most offer something. That's, that's definitely for sure.
Where I used to live, they had a special garbage truck through our garbage service, and you bought a sticker that cost, I don't know, $1.50 or something, and you put it on your paper bag by the curb, and then the special garbage truck would pick up your paper bag of leaves. Are there any, companies that offer that type of service?
As far as I can tell, there's one, but in the places that use them, it's because they're also their waste and recycling contractor, and it's not our current one. I know when I reached out a number of years ago to every area, um, waste hauler that I thought may do it, I got no responses. I don't know that it's a big moneymaker for them, so, um, I think the only way would be if we had a different firm and they could add it as an additional service.
Sure, yeah, that, I think it was, yeah, our, our waste hauler that had that service. I guess that, the one benefit of that one was that the people that used it did pay a little more. And like, I would pay, yeah, you'd buy 10 stickers for $15, and then that would help offset the cost. If it's not an option, it's not an option, I guess.
JJ, I had another question. As far as the vehicle, it would be versatile in that it wouldn't just be a leaf vac truck that you're looking at. What other, um, ways could you use another vehicle?
That's one benefit to this kind of, to us discussing this late in the game, I suppose, because I, uh, I think they've come a long way. And, um, I reached out to DeForest, and they just got one that's versatile. They just, I believe, have it set up to be a dump truck, which is probably the option we would go with after I talked with folks and we talked about different things you could put on it. You wouldn't want to set it up necessarily with a full plow to use it through the winter just because of the extra beating it would take. You know, you're gonna want to extend this leaf collection vehicle as long as you can. But having another dump truck just around for the rest of the year, um, would be a pretty simple use to add on. But they do offer flexibility where, um, even if it's just a smaller, uh, sewer jetting unit, you can, you can hook those on. There's, there's different things. Basically, when the, the life of this chassis, you've got a, a growing number of options. So, that'd probably be the route we would go. Um, and I know DeForest just, they ordered theirs pre-pandemic, but just received it this fall. And I talked a few times with them about their unit, and they're pretty happy. So, that's what I envisioned, that, you know, it'd at least be a dump truck, and we could always have more options where you could look to utilize it in other ways in the future.
And in the, our, our cap, our, our capital plan, is a dump truck one of the vehicles that we, is up for replacement soon?
Um, basically, we use our plow. We don't have a huge need for just a dump truck all that often, but, um, we do use them. And the smaller one that we have was, is only, well, I guess it's five years old now, so it'd still be, in about five years, that should be replaced. But it could be another way where maybe we don't, we're not taking our, our big patrol plow truck out, where we just need a smaller dump truck or, you know. So, I mean, it would be an option to, to get used other times of the year and take time off of other ones. But not necessarily a need. I don't know that we have another equipment need that fits in perfectly with how these can be used at this point. But I guess that there's a growing number of options and things people are doing with these.
And JJ, how would you address the fact that there isn't a space to keep the vehicle? If we were to, tonight, which we're not gonna, but we were to say, go buy one, what, what would you be able to do? It sounds like there's no place to put it.
There's no, well, this is a, a, a group that, when I started here before we got into the municipal services building, they found a way to, you know, you play a little bit of Tetris, you're parked uncomfortably. They're all good equipment operators. We can fit some things in. I mean, we'd get it under a roof. But it may not be ideal. Yeah, I guess I'll leave it at that. It might not look great if you were taking a tour of the facility at, at night when everything was parked, but we could, we could still get everything under a roof. And then hopefully, though, we continue talking about facilities as we move into the future, because there's, there are some needs there too.
And one other question, back to Thaden Pond, um, you'd mentioned grants in the memo. Do you have any idea of when you would know more about what grants we might be able to get for that project?
I'm hoping the early half of, of '22 of this year. That was kind of the plan, was seek every opportunity available to us, uh, this year, and then construct next year.
I don't want to continue to drag out or delay ordering a truck if we decide to go that route. But I just wonder if perhaps we need more information about Thaden Pond and grants and costs of that, and, um, you know, maybe more in-depth analysis of staffing needs in which year and projections of that. And then the piece about greater flexibility and ARPA fund spending before we can really make a final decision. That's just kind, it seems like there's a lot of pieces here that I'm not comfortable locking in to a final decision yet, but I'm, I mean, that's just me.
I'm with you on that, Heidi.
Matt, can we also, uh, ask our friends to go to the five-year plan and model this with the light leaf vac? Also correct for the fact that the Thaden Pond is now, looks like a million dollars for borrowing if we choose to do that. Obviously, hopefully, some grants will offset that. And then the, the people piece. And then we need to figure out where we run into trouble in '25 or '26 or whatever from the levy perspective. And they may have some ideas there as well. And that'll complete the picture.
That, there, there'd probably be some additional costs from elders to, to do that outside of the, the normal updating of the five-year plan process, which, you know, we would normally start kind of late, late spring with them. So, I don't, I don't know. I don't think it would be a lot of cost, but, you know, probably a couple thousand bucks to, to do that potentially.
Does that qualify for ARPA funds?
I don't think so.
You know, the other thing I think we would, if we have elders do that, would we want them to take into consideration some of the information we've got about the facility studies? Is that something that needs to be addressed as well? I realize that doesn't qualify for any ARPA funds, but it's all part of the big picture here, uh, that, that we'll take money out of the levy and cost all of us more.
I think it's a good point.
That was all actually.
Results from the FIRE study or, or the EMS study and, and what that might do to our, our budget as well, long-term. So, I think there's a lot of things that are kind of up in the air, and, and that's why I think Thaden Pond, knowing that that's 100% covered by the ARPA funds, it just seems kind of crazy we'd actually look at borrowing money to do something like that rather than use ARPA funds to do it. It's free money.
If we can get, um, ARPA funds and grants, you know, we might have some leftover ARPA funds for something, or to put toward, you know, the interceptor or save up. Well, I guess you can't save it for a leaf truck because you have to use it within a certain amount of time. But, yeah, I think, do we have a debt, a timeline on spending the ARPA funds?
2026. And it, by, it needs to be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and expended by December 31st, 2026.
My understanding of grants is the only guarantee is you're not guaranteed to get one. I don't think we can count on that, uh, as a source of funding for any projects. That's just a, a blessing when we do get grants.
You're still gonna have to pay, you know, if Strand is right, you're still gonna have to pay around 200, a little over 250K for, for Thaden. You're not gonna, it's not completely free.
Well, 250 grand out of the levy versus, versus, uh, or 250 grand in borrowing is better than a million dollars in borrowing.
Sure.
By far.
Do we know how much it is approximately per household for, like, say, 250,000 in borrowing? I can't remember from just a few months ago.
I wish I could give a good answer on that. I, I don't even wanna, I don't wanna guess, because I could try to dig into it real quick, but, uh, yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna answer off the cuff. I'm sorry, Melissa.
No, it's okay. I mean, it's, as far as with the leaf truck, it would be spread out among the community and in our taxes, and it's a service for people that, I mean, they're ultimately then paying for the taxes, or with the ARPA funds. So, I mean, it's kind of one or the other. It's the same either way. And the concern with the leaf vac truck is that the lead time is so long. So, I mean, I, I don't, um, I don't disagree that we should get more information, but I think that maybe, as David pointed out earlier, we should have a discussion regarding the leaf vac truck, specifically as to what we're gonna do with that, so that if it is a service that we want to provide to our residents, I mean, it ends up being a couple of years from now if we decide now, because we won't get the vehicle for that long, so. Is this item to have a motion on or just basically discussion purposes at this point?
Uh, it's discussed, I think, and it's considering prioritization proposal, propose. But again, we don't know, as I think Heidi mentioned, we don't know what this additional legislation might bring. That might change some of the, some of the board members' consideration there. I think financially, we don't know the impact of having the wrong number in for Thaden, considering what the leaf truck will cost to replace it for the person ongoing on the levy. There's a lot of questions, I think, that are up in the air. So, unless somebody else reads it differently than I do.
So, at this point, um, are, are we directing staff to update or get, spend the extra funds for elders to provide us with more financial information? Or?
You could make that motion, or, uh, Matt may have enough of an inkling from what, uh, board members have already said. Matt, do you need a motion, or I think everybody wants more information when it comes to that, as well as a few other things?
Um, I mean, it depends on how, how quickly do we want to, because it, what it would turn into is really kind of rehashing the entire five-year plan. Because we already had, you know, Because we already had, you know, the facilities in there and that was taken out during the last go-around as well as the, both the, the library and, and the addition and renovation of municipal services building. Those are all in there. So I don't, do we look at that all together along with the updates with a leaf vac? And employee in there for that and the increased cost for Thaden? Do we look at everything all together? I, I'm just saying if we get into all that, it's gonna be a whole redoing the five-year plan that we just did.
And the five-year plan told us that we couldn't afford it all. And we put everything in.
Not with, yeah, not without referendums.
Correct. Because we'll exceed our levy. Which is why I think the financial personnel group said to pull it out for now and re-approach it later. But we could just look at it with, with the leaf vac and with the update of Thaden Pond, just to see what it does.
Just to kind of build on that and something that I think Paul's brought up before, you know, strategic plan kind, I mean, kind of discussion because it kind of seems like we're talking about priorities and which of these we may be able to pursue. And that might be more in-depth than we're talking, but maybe like a special workshop strategic plan on how do we achieve what goal, I, I don't know what, but it seems like there's a lot of competing things and we kind of have to decide which priorities we could pursue. Knowing of course that maybe none of them would be if the board, you know, changes in any significant, you know, as, as final as we can be final. But I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think that I still feel strongly, that's an important piece. I think at times we struggle, even in this meeting here, you know, to come up with solutions. And I think that is a more formal process to help, you know, prioritize as a group. Matt, I know you'd sent an email, but it was around what, twenty-five K to do that?
The wide range, I've seen them done for as low as twenty-five thousand, but they, they can run depending on the firm you select and what the scope is to up to six hundred, or sorry, sixty thousand. Twenty-five to sixty thousand. It's kind of a big range, but that's what you'd be looking at to do that. But that's not in the budget.
So, so the, the leaf vac is not in the budget. It's not in our village's priorities. Thaden Pond is in the budget, capital budget. I, I guess I'm, I'm kind of miffed about why we're talking about a, a leaf vac if it's something that's not even in our long-range plans at this point. Shouldn't, shouldn't it be put in the long-range plans before we start talking about buying something that's gonna cost a lot to operate? And we're gonna have to replace it at some point in, in that ten-year range?
I think the reason why we're talking about it is because these ARPA funds are available to use for it. So it doesn't have to be in our budget or in the financial management plan. That's why it was, why I brought it forward to discuss.
But the ARPA funds don't cover a hundred percent of the cost. The ARPA funds don't cover the labor it's gonna take to operate the equipment. Thaden Pond will, the vast majority of that will be paid by the ARPA funds, which is something we, we have to do something with anyways. It doesn't sound like we have a whole lot of choice and that'll go a long ways towards getting us, I'm more of a thumbs up with the DNR. I don't have the proper terminology for that, but I, I don't know. It just seems strange that the leaf vac back was in the budget about five, six years ago. It got taken out because people didn't want to spend the extra money on it. And now suddenly we're talking about something that could be a money pit.
I don't think anybody's called it a money pit. I mean, we're providing a service that many other communities provide. I mean, it's not, it's. Anyway, I'm, I'm, we're in different spots Troy. I understand your position. And my position is I'd like to provide a service to our residents. And we've already planned for Thaden Pond in our budget. I mean, and the extra funds that aren't used on a leaf vac truck could go towards Thaden Pond and getting it back to the six sixty that was originally budgeted or that we thought it would cost from our other engineers. So, I mean, that's what makes sense to me.
I understand your position Melissa, and I don't see the need to add the service. Seems like we're growing just fine without a leaf vac truck. I, I can't say that anybody's come to me and I didn't move to the Village Cottage Grove because I don't have a leaf vac truck. It's just, I'm not sure why we're in this mode. We have to continue to add services that some people don't want. Most people don't want.
I disagree with that last point Troy.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to lean with Troy on this one. I, I just don't hear this as a need. And I brought it up before. I mean, I don't mean to sidebar this, but I would say I get a lot more pressing comments about recycling twice a week. I've never heard anything about leaves. So I'm with Troy on this one.
I mean, I would say recycling and leaf collection, you could put in the same conversation, Paul.
All the people I know, I've never heard leaf conversation. It's never come up. It's always been recycling.
I mean, knocked on a lot of doors in the village and it's, again, it's all, I mean, to Heidi's point, right?
I know a lot of people in the village and I have never heard this once come up.
It's, well, Heidi and Sarah both mentioned it in this conversation, so.
And I'm not suggesting this, but you know, recycling would cost a lot less money than a leaf vac with, for our citizens. And I'm not suggesting that we add recycling to our weekly schedule. I'm just saying though, that there are some I think be more appreciative of that and they, but just, I don't know. We can't be everything to everyone.
All right. I think we've, it's a bit more information, it sounds like. Again, whatever way you go, there's, there's a cost to the citizens perhaps. Some ongoing, some others not. We do nothing. So we do have an opportunity with the ARPA funds, which is great. And there may be more flexibility coming, so that may even call the conversation even more or make it more clear. I think we'll move on from this unless anybody else has anything else to say.
John, can I use my three minutes here?
Yes, Kyle, you can. You could, you gotta, please share your name and your address and hold your comments. No more than three minutes, please.
Thank you. Kyle Broome, two one two Vista Drive. I wanted to wait for this agenda item. All good points. I think definitely things that are needed. I know that I'm a previous elected official and this was on the budget in the past and it got taken off at the time. And if I would have known that it was gonna be kicked down the road so far, you know, maybe would have fought a little harder at that time for it. We are losing some people to this community for amenities. I think that, you know, a couple pennies onto a tax bill for a service that protects our streets and our homes is important for the community. I am seeing developers and citizens ask for this in the real estate world. So, and the costs continue to go up, so kicking it down the road further and further and further is only gonna cost us more and more for something that is actually needed. So I just kind of wanted to, to say that I'm pro, pro the leaf truck and hope to find a way to, to make it work either in the budget or, or in the funds. Because I, I do see it out in the society quite often. Or I see a lot of people neglected, like was mentioned that it, they didn't know that we didn't have it. And I have pictures of, of our sewers and water, our sewer system kind of full of stuff. So I just wanted to be in the record of, of pro for that. And, and then I have a couple of questions. Like I, I feel like the, the leafs is kind of handled like the Christmas trees and, and so what, what are we doing with that right now? I know that people are putting them to the curb and they're magically disappearing, but you know, I look at that as kind of a similar thing. I wanted to make note that the, it appears to me that the employee is needed regardless and, and JJ needs that employee added. And it shouldn't be labeled on one service or another. And I'll leave it at that. So thank you.
All right. Thanks Kyle. We'll move on then to reports from village officers, starting with Stratford. Larry, you on somewhere?
Hey, I'm on. Hello everyone. It's nice to see everyone. It's been a while. A couple of things tonight. First, just wanted to just give an update quick on Wyden. The discussions with Reed Wyden about acquiring property for the Stormwater Pond infrastructure that has to be put in on the west side of, of Vilas. And I just wanted to let you know that we've, we've reached a deal on that. That's something that's come back to you a few times. This is just as an update, but we are sizing that pond per the discussion earlier about, about the other pond. Really all that's required is that we size the pond to handle water quality. And, but what we're doing there is we're sizing it twenty percent larger to handle water volume and flow control. As a, you know, that's what we would expect to require of our developers and so that's, that's where it's going. I, I wouldn't say it's necessarily costing any more to do that, or at least it's a very good incremental increase for the village to do that. For that, if anybody has any questions about that, contact JJ and he can fill you in. But per the discussion we had last time, you didn't want to see it as another agenda item just to get an update. And I probably, here, the, I guess the important point is that we're building it in a way that seems consistent with what everyone's looking for. The other thing I would, I would mention today is I think as we work through this pandemic, it's probably a good idea to have conversations about how to hold these meetings more often rather than less often. I think JJ is maybe the only person besides our, our video coordinator at, at the village hall today. I, I would want you to avoid a situation in which there was nobody there from the board and it was maybe a contentious issue, which of course we don't have anything on the slate right now. But that, you know, that we need to make sure that we've got a presence there to maintain order. And, you know, the mask requirements and so on, depending on how that works out. So I think that it's not necessarily a discussion item that has to happen at the board tonight. But, but people could provide comments to John or to Matt about where we think we should be going with what's going on with COVID right now. And I hate to, to have a roller coaster, but it, it might not be a bad idea to go back to virtual here for a while. It's just entirely up to what you want to do.
All right. Thanks Larry. Moving then to item B is a follow-up report on feedback received on the area municipalities regarding the pool fence requirements. And there is a memo in there on the pool fence ordinance in the packet as well. Aaron, I don't know if you're handling this one or?
Actually, John, I just, I believe that's my memo, just reached out to area communities and what they have for pool fence requirements. And it's essentially the same language for, was it seven area communities? So I'm assuming somebody did the work at one point and it was copied a bunch of times over. And then the three communities that, like us, still require the fence.
Thanks JJ. I should have looked at the top. And then that, that next item or sub-item then adds right into this is discussing, consider further direction for staff and ordinance committee regarding the pool fence requirements based on what JJ's dug up and put in the memo.
John, I have a few points I'd like to make.
Go ahead David.
So let's talk about pool covers versus pool fences. So the gentleman that brought up, I can't remember his name, but that brought this back to, to light did mention that him and his wife would be vigilant and always make sure that they would, you know, be outside with their children or if they were inside. I understand that, you know, he may be vigilant, but the next owner of that pool may not be so vigilant or another pool owner may not be as vigilant as, as that gentleman and his wife. Even the slightest bit of water pooling on top of a cover can cause accidents and safety hazards for children. Children can have, can and have drowned on top of safety pool covers. Water can collect on top of pool covers from rain, snow, or even condensation. And children can drown in as little as two inches of water. Pool covers take time to secure and unsecure, so they can be pretty inconvenient. A pool safety cover takes time to secure properly. If a person wants to run into the house to get a drink or use a bathroom with a pool cover, it can become a liability because of the time it takes to secure the cover. Covers must be properly secured to be effective. All gates are required to automatically close and latch. Pool safety requires depth and defense at the end of the day. So I'm not saying that a pool cover is a bad idea, but I think alone can be a liability. California, for an example, requires two out of seven compliant safety features, which includes a permanent fence, a compliant pool cover, door and window alarms, and self-closing door and window devices. Drowning is regularly in the top five leading causes of death for children in the U.S. Seventy percent of children that drown are in the care of both of their parents. Further, the American Red Cross says as many as twenty percent of near drowning survivors suffer severe permanent neurological disability from near drowning. It's for these reasons I'm against modifying this ordinance. Thank you.
All right. Any other board members? Thanks David.
You know, if people don't close their fences around the pool, all those situations David just said, it all still happened. I, I just don't see that it's my place to tell someone if they build a pool that they need to have a fence or not have a fence around it. It's just my opinion. I would feel horrible if it was my kid that drowned or someone else's kid that drowned in my pool because it wasn't covered, because my fence wasn't closed, my fence wasn't locked. You walk around the village and you see above ground pools that have ladders going directly into it. No fence around it, no cover over the pool. Should there be a fence along the creek that goes in my backyard so people don't fall into the creek and drown? I mean, we can take this to an extreme of whatever we want, but at the end of the day, I, I don't feel it's our place to tell every homeowner what is best for them and their property. That's really between them, their neighbors, and their insurance company. If insurance companies are accepting this, they obviously don't see the same liability that, that, or still liability, I guess, of having a fence or not having a fence. So.
Well, in response Troy, I will say, like I said, pool safety requires depth and defense. I just use California as one example. That's not the only state that requires two, you know, multiple safety features. But a, but a, a gate within the village of Cottage Grove is, has been a tried and true safety mechanism. I totally agree with you that if you prop the gate open or it doesn't close all the way, that there is no mitigation factor there. But it, it's worked to date. Again, why I, I think we should not modify this ordinance.
Other board member comments?
I, I agree with everything David has said and that's why I was against changing it a few months ago. And the people are installing pools in our community, knowing what the ordinance is. So I don't see the reason why it needs to be changed.
All right. Thanks Melissa. Others? This is a discussing consider, I don't know if, I'm not hearing overwhelming push to have the ordinance committee and staff move forward with, with changing ordinance, unless somebody does otherwise.
I'll note, too, that this was at Plan Commission a few months ago, and there was a public hearing, and I don't, oh, I don't remember if anyone attended, but Plan Commission did recommend to keep the ordinance as is as well, so I think that when, since it was so recent, that we should just keep it as is.
And, and this isn't anything to do with pools, or the, the fence ordinance per se, it's, it's more in general. The board may want to consider some rules for when, you know, a decision is made, and then a matter, you know, a couple of months later, someone wants something revisited, some sort of timeframe, if you want to make it a year, or, or whatever, or unless there's maybe a situation, if there was some, certainly a change in law, or some other circumstance that would lead you to want to have another discussion, I think that's perfectly fine, but you might want to have, or consider some, some standard for when something's brought back, and then that can be passed along to committees, too, so when, when someone comes to a chair to get something on an agenda, they may just say, you know, it's not, it's not ripe for discussion again at this time.
I think this is the first one I remember in, in my time on the board, but it may have happened to get prior to this, but usually it doesn't recirculate, but obviously a resident brought it up, so we, we certainly need to, to consider that.
I, I can see this issue coming up regularly, I'm guessing the pool companies who install the pools, given that they work in all these other municipalities, might be recommending, you know, a pool cover versus a fence, and not knowing every specific village's ordinance, this is one I could see kind of resurfacing, especially as the pool companies are, are suggesting the cover, so to Matt's point, I guess, it, maybe it would be helpful to have some sort of guidance on when this comes for consideration, or how frequently.
I think it's known when they pull the permit, though, for sure, to that point, but I'm fine setting some sort of standard, it doesn't matter to me outside of this, it's not really an agenda item, though, so we'd have to probably post it in that fashion. And Matt and I can put it back on next month's agenda, as far as consider, you know, phrase it and say it such a way, if matter's considered, it's X period, whatever the board determines before it's considered again, although we got to be careful with that unless, because you got to put all kinds of caveats in that, something happens.
It may be a terrible idea, too, I haven't, that was off, that, I was thinking of that, and I didn't even talk to Larry, so it might, it might not even be a good idea, who knows?
And that's, that's why I said, I think this is the first time in my tenure, at least, that I remember something like this coming back through so quickly.
Yeah, I mean, we can always just leave it to, you know, it's up to, if, if it gets on an agenda, it gets on the agenda, if there's, if there's, if there aren't two board members that want to take something on, it just doesn't get on the agenda, and then at that point, it's, you know, resident is perfectly welcome to come during public comment, so I think it's, you could also probably easier police it yourselves than going through the process of creating any policy.
Yeah, I think it was a fair point to bring up, Matt, but before John had mentioned, you know, that he hasn't seen anything like this in his time, you know, I thought that was actually a good point, you know, that there's some kind of standard put around, these were, you know, you're not opening the door for people to come whenever they want to, you know, try to, now get a change, so, but I understand there's more to it now that the discussion is going on.
So I'm not, I'm not hearing any, any motions or anything, so we don't have to motion anything if, if no one feels like we need to move with this particular item. We can move on to the next item. Again, I'll pause and allow anybody to correct me, or say something different. All right, then we'll move on to communication and Melissa's business. First up is approval, consideration for approval of vouchers. I think it's on the, yeah, second page, I just had a quick question, clarification. What is, for the City of Madison Treasure, the RMS project? I'm sure, it stands for something I probably should know, but right now I'm drawing a blank, when I saw it earlier, I was still drawing a blank.
Report management software, John.
Thank you, chief, I knew that I should have known that, all my times in LEC, I should have remembered that. And now it's connecting the dots, my neurons are firing, thank you. Any other questions, comments regarding the vouchers as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. All right, thanks, Troy, thanks, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Anything in the correspondence sphere? I don't have any that I can recall right now. I don't know if any other board member has anything. Then we'll move on. Upcoming community events, other than, I think, everybody just hunkering down and avoiding the very chilly temperatures out, and wish, a side note, wishing everybody a happy New Year, too. Anybody have anything? Too darn cold. All right, we'll move then to future agenda items. I think we'll have Plan Commission items, probably, as well as anything else that comes out of committees, because there'll be a rash of them in the next two weeks. Anything else, JJ or Matt, that you can think of that, that will pop up?
I, I think the main thing is just noting the change in date for that meeting is-
Yes.
Normally would have landed on, or, the regular meeting landed on Martin Luther King Day, and we moved, the boards moved that to the 19th, so the meeting will be on Wednesday, the 19th, for the next board meeting.
Thank you, Matt. All right, then item nine.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second, non-debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, have a great week.
Thank you, have a great day.